All right, the time is 6:30. I will call to order the adjournment of the whole meeting for Monday, August 20, 2022. We will start with the roll call.
Evan Giegus.
Here.
Richard Harrington.
Present.
Charles Javinsky.
Here.
John Glenn.
Here.
Mitchell Cale. Lamont Kiefer.
Here.
Nellie Painter.
Here.
Dean Peterson.
Here. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number one, request by Rena Rouse for consideration for approving her beverage operator's license. Is she here today?
She is.
Yep, come on up. All right, well, I suppose let's, I'm sorry, I should have had she call first to explain the situation. Sorry, we'll switch that off.
I can explain if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, that'll work great.
So, so Rena had applied for a bartending license. On July 13th, Chief Police had reviewed the operator's license submitted and did the background investigation, and it was determined that Rena was convicted of possession of heroin with intent to deliver in Bracing County Court back in 2015. So, we do have an ordinance that states that the operator's license applicant cannot have one or more felony convictions in the last 10 years involving alcohol or drugs. So because of the, and I think Chief and I have been very clear that we use the black and white definitions of denials for it, so the two of us did agree to deny the license. And so she's here today. There's a packet in front of you. She provided that. I did not print those out. She did a few days, and the copy of that is also inside the packet for you as well for you to review. And then I'll kind of just let you have it from here.
Okay. Sorry, I'm not very good at speaking in front of people. I guess just some of the things that I wanted to go over is I've been a clean for over four and a half years. It would have been four years in December. I do attend soberize, the soberize meeting, the group that meets here in town. It's like an NA group. I do attend that on Thursday nights when I don't have my son. I have successfully, I think there's a paper in there, I did successfully complete one of my cases on probation last year, I believe. And then another sheet that's included in there is that I did successfully complete the ORS program. And also went to school while I was doing time for that case. I did go to school for welding. And then the other sheets in there are different treatments and classes that I've completed over the years as well. I did ask my probation officer for permission to apply for the job before I even applied, and she said that she thinks that I can handle the job. I'm single mom and trying to make money to support me and my son. And I do help my dad out working at Paul's Tire during the day. And then on the nights that I don't have my son, also have been working at the bar to help be able to get my own place.
With a licensed bartender there.
Yeah, to help be able to get my own place and support me and my son. And then the last thing is I will be off probation December next year, so. If there's any questions you guys have or anything.
How many days do you see your probation officer?
I see her once every three months. I have, I'm on the minimum probation because I have been doing really good on probation. She trusts me and she knows that I've been doing really good. And right now, at first when I got out, I think I see her, saw her once every two weeks, but over time, she's gained my trust, I've gained her trust, and we've, I've only seen her once every three months now.
Any other questions from council?
You said you took some welding classes. Are you using that education at all?
I'm not currently. I, I took the welding classes while I was at Tachita because I did do some time on those cases. And I took those classes, and I only got to do part of the classes before I got released because for good behavior, I got released early. And I didn't get to finish the hands-on welding. It is something that I'd be, that I do want, I do want to go back to school eventually, but as far as right now, I really just want to get my own place and get on my feet and support me and my son for now, and then figure out, you know, things down the road.
Okay, so you weren't able to complete that.
I wasn't able to.
Especially the practical, so obviously you can't go all the welding.
Yeah, all the bookwork I got to complete, but I didn't get to complete that.
Because of earlier release.
Yep.
How many days are you going to be working at the Corvap? Every day?
Not every day. I don't have my son Tuesday night, Wednesday night, Thursday night, so those would be the only nights that I would be able to, whenever she would put me on the schedule on those days.
Weekend?
No, I have my son Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday night, Monday night. So Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday would be the only times I would be available that she could put me on the schedule.
We may declare that's the only time she, without exceptions, they can't ask her any other days because she works during the day and has her son at night, and those, the only times she has under her son are those three days until she wants to work so she can build money for her own place.
And the letter we have on the front here, Michelle, this was your parole agent?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Looks like you did very well with the schooling as well?
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely.
Chief, do you have anything to offer?
No, I really don't. I mean, like Becky said, it was denied on the basis of the ordinance. I don't have, I don't even know her, haven't heard of her, so just strictly on that.
So it's not based on the judgment of the character, it's just based on the black and white, black and white reading of the ordinance that it got?
Which is why we're here, so you can meet her, so you know.
I have two questions, actually. One, what measures do you have in place going forward?
As far as?
So you don't slip back.
Right. As far as that, I have, like I said, I have been attending the soberize meetings. They have one on Sundays and they have one on Thursdays, and I have attended those when I can. And then also, I, part of that group that meets there, we have a Facebook chat. So anytime that I, if I would need any help or anything like that, I always have somebody that I can reach out to. As far as right now, I'm really close with my family members, and I, right now, I'm living at my mom and dad's house. And to be honest, ever since I got pregnant, everything's just changed a little bit. I think that before, I continued to go back to it because I didn't really have anything above myself to live for. Ever since I got pregnant, it hasn't really ever even been a thought in my head or crossed my mind. I really haven't struggled with it.
I do really commend you for putting those packets together.
Thank you.
That shows to me that you're, that you're more than serious about obtaining employment where my initial thought was to deny it.
Thank you.
I would move to approve.
I would second that.
A motion by Richard and a second by John.
And I just really would commit to it, having so many, I mean, you've always, it seems like you've done so much to better prove yourself. It's been a lot of time, so.
Thank you.
I totally need second chances. It's impressive.
Thank you.
And I also say I wish we had more of these packets. What we've been looking for these before, this is really good.
Yes, I'd also like to comment. I'm usually, I'm pretty hard on this because I like to, we have the ordinances in place for a reason.
Yeah.
And, but yours is, you've put together one of the best presentations and have high recommendations, took educational steps all throughout your incarceration and parole status. And so, to let the public know that we do look at this case by case, it's everyone, and I'm, like I said, I'm an advocate for staying with the denial, but I'm going to flip on this one.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, any other questions, comments? So a reminder that the motion is to approve the operator's license. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Of course, the reminder too is the final vote is tomorrow, but we are the same body that votes on it.
Do you want to spend your same time tomorrow or what?
It's up to you. It's not, never a bad idea, it's just a case of other questions, but the final.
Same time. I do have you guys up first on the agenda to decide.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's at six, not 6:30?
6:30.
6:30. Yeah, we only go at six if there's a question. All right, agenda item number two, approval of minutes from July 22.
Okay.
I've got a motion by Dean and a second by Nellie. Any further discussion? Hearing on, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to the reports, we have agenda item three, the city clerk monthly report.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Just a few things, we did have a successful election last Tuesday. We had 1,309 total voters, I believe. We don't have the finalized results, but I'll have the talent report ready for the September meeting for you to approve. We did receive our Badger books. I know that we have been waiting a really, really long time for them. I ordered them back in November of 2021, and we finally just received them, but they didn't come with printers. So I'm still waiting to see if we're going to be using them for the November election. I haven't really made up my mind yet because it does require training, and I want to be sure we have all the materials before we do that, so more to come on that. I am very, very thankful to have received an Andres grant for the clerk's office for two additional handicap accessible voting booths, which we got to match the other ones that we have, so those are here, and we'll be using those for November, so we're very, very grateful for that. And then also during this time, we've been doing recruiting for our part-time deputy clerk. We have made a selection. Mindy Scholesy has accepted the position, and so she will not be starting though until October 17th, so it's going to be a little time before we see her. And I think that's pretty much it. We've been just pretty busy trying to get close down on the election and whatnot with recruiting and everything else, getting ready for November now, so I would entertain any questions to be had of. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Becky. All right, moving on to the treasure, we have agenda item four, the July 31st, 2022 cash and investments report. Molly.
Good evening. I will just give my report quickly first. We just wrapped up the tax collection for 2021 tax year, 2022 collection period. Any payments that have not been submitted must now go to Monroe County, so from here they go to the county. We do have a new AP clerk. She will be starting Thursday. Her name is Sandy Ernst, and she's coming to us from the Sparta area. So we're excited to get her in and get her trained, as Candy has already started her transition to the ambulance position. We had a kickoff meeting with Invoice Cloud. We'll now have regular meetings, trying to get everything implemented for our online payment processing. They're hoping to have us live by mid-November, so we'll have all utility, and we can do next year's tax collection better online. We're working on the budget. We did get our net new construction number, so as a reminder, that's the amount that we can increase our operating levy by. Last year it was 0.33%. This year we increased to 1.35%. So while that's better than last year, we all know the cost of everything has increased more than 1.35%, so it's going to be another tight budget year. So department heads are already aware, we're doing what we can to cut where we can. In a little better news, all of our TID values went up this year. The way that the assessment reads and the way they value it, really, they stayed pretty steady, but last year they dropped significantly, so we're happy that we didn't lose value this year. All of them increased, but at a rate that we would expect just based on the equalization number, so, but good news there. Then with that, I will submit the July 31st, 2022 cash and investments report for approval.
Motion to approve the cash and investments.
Second.
We've got a motion by Sean and a second by John. Any further discussion? Hearing on, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Sean and John.
And then I've also included the June revenues and expenses with comparison to budget for your review, and I would entertain any questions that anyone has on our sixth month picture.
I have one question.
Okay.
And it doesn't have to do anything with your accounting. This has to do with exactly what is a line item.
Okay.
It's 0152300-2900, and it's under the fire department as ambulance expense. Is that our per cap?
That is the per cap number, yes.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to verify.
Yeah, it's the city's portion of the per cap. Ambulance service contract, yeah. And it's not actually a fire protection expense, it just falls there when we print out the financials, yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to verify this. I thought that's one of the, I wanted to verify it.
That's where it sits. Yep, that's where it sits. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Molly. All right, moving on to parks and recreation, we have agenda item six, tumble parks and recreation program report. Joe.
Good evening.
Good evening, Joe.
Start with the Parks Department, just finishing up our busy summer months, still with park shelters, mowing, cleaning, garbage, a lot of garbage pickup, helping with different community events, national night out and so forth. We starting up here in the next couple of weeks in early September, our fall tree program, so we'll get that hopefully this week, next week on our website. And for residents that are looking to plant some trees, and we'll also be taking, we've got some requests for King Avenue after that project over there, the nice big boulevards for us to plant some boulevard trees, and we had some homeowners request. Our recreation programs, this is where we're struggling a little bit. We're trying to get geared up for our fall winter programs. Unfortunately, Karen Brown, who is our longtime gymnastics coordinator supervisor, has stepped down. We thank her for her many years of service, so we're trying to find gymnastics instructors and coordinators for all our programs, and just, this is kind of the year individuals have stepped down, so we're trying to get geared up for that, for our fall programming. So anybody else that are looking to coach, anything, gymnastics, help out, to contact the Parks and Recreation Department for that. Aquatic Center, last day was our, our last day for the season. Unfortunately, we had a close yesterday with mild temperatures and a shortened staff. We made it through. The last week or two was kind of rough with just a lot of, you know, high school young individuals with a lot of things, high school activities throughout the camps, band camp, different, just different things, so we survived. Looking to do some maintenance here this fall. Now that the pool's operating, you know, at a pretty good pace there with the water usage and so forth, we'll look to get some quotes for painting the vessel as you've been down there, our lines are starting to go, and the safety lines for the different zones for the kids are starting to deteriorate, so we'll try to get, move in to get that place, you know. This year was the leak in staff, next year we just try to get it looking better for the community for that. Information in there on our swim lessons enrollment and so forth for that. The splash pad was closed the last three weeks, just, we got hit with that lightning storm on that Saturday, took out the smart hub, which is the brains of the operation. So thanks to Becky and her crew for insurance claim for that, we'll be getting outside deductible insurance for that, but just waiting for the part from that that comes from Canada, so we should have the time for opening next year, so with that. Recreation Park, we had some major events, as you can, with the Warriors and Warlords in July, followed by the Monroe County Fair. This month starts our wedding season, we have three weddings coming up, and we had one this past weekend, and a couple weddings coming up. Then we'll try to get things turned around for gymnastics and hockey. September, we have a wedding, and then the Rotary Club's ATV, UTV rally with their raising funds for Winnebago Park for that. Going back to the top, Parks, Winnebago Park is, you know, pretty tore up. If you haven't been through there, Brandon Street's started work on that, so it's kind of just bear with us as we work through that project here in the fall, and hopefully to get things cleaned up so we're ready to go, you know, heading into next year's Memorial Weekend, you know, when we kick off summer next year for that. Other than that, National Night Out was at Rec Park, and just cleaning up for major events out there, so a lot to clean up from all our big ones, so. Any questions or concerns?
I do, I have a question. How does the pool operate this year?
Mechanically, pretty good, after we got things, you know, thing, just some work to do with the young staff, and, you know, we're working through that, but for the majority, they did a good job, it's just, you know, a lot of learning and so forth, so just, you know, just we'll work on next year, be more dependable if you're signed up for a shift, you know, expect to sign up for a shift.
Well, I was talking more, I was talking more like the pool itself, you know, with maintenance and.
Yeah, I still got, you know, some things with the vessel, but compared to the last few years, it's heading in the right direction, so.
Okay, thank you.
Are there auction, for any future auctions?
I believe we've got pencil for two auctions. There are normal one in February and November, November, February. We got the gun shows and stuff coming up this winter, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Good luck on the football season.
Yep, thank you.
All right, moving on to public works and utilities, we have agenda item number seven, public works and utilities report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The street department side, we did install four new, RFB is the acronym, rectangular rapid flashing beacons, and those are located up by Tank Park, just north of Arthur Street, Foster, Holton and Superior, Foster and Superior, and Clifton and Hollister. The Clifton and Hollister one, we had a part that we needed, only one side of it was functioning, so I have not heard if we received that and fixed that one yet, but otherwise, the rest of them appear to be working quite well.
Looks really good, by the way.
Yeah, I think they did a great job, and hopefully they get used, and they should, and hopefully put in the right spots. So streets, I don't know if you've noticed, we've paved the short block typically we've been working on between Kilborn and Woodard, and that is on Nod Street, Brownell and Saratoga are all done. West Juno was tore up, and our concrete contractor is up there working on the curb and sidewalks. I would suspect that would probably be paved later this week or possibly next. We did start tearing up a portion of Benton right in front of the Elbow Room. We'll get that done up to the alley, it's one segment, and then we're going to tackle the next segment where it kind of really gets wide in there along Williams and Benton in front of Kelsey's and the Amtrak. Next kind of hit list items for us are informational signs that we're committed to putting up for the chamber, as you're going in various park locations. I'm not sure that they actually determine where exactly, but what I've heard is four different parks. And then, time allows, we do have new traffic signal poles, so that would, if you, if you're down here on Jackson Street, the one signal pole in the center is black, that got hit or, I don't know if it got hit.
It got hit. I didn't do it, but.
It's up right up.
But it got hit.
So we replace that with a black one to kind of mirror the image of the streetlights and get things looking, kind of tighten them up, make them look nice. And then we do have a retirement party next week for Stuart Westfall, and we also lost an employee to Parks and Rec Department, so we're working on filling some vacancies and staffing in the public works. For the sewer department, operations are pretty much normal out at the plant, trying to get the chip ceiling done while they're in town for the entire parking lot area out there. Waiting to get some roofs replaced on all the buildings, and just doing some tuck pointing and a lot of various door replacements, painting, those types of maintenance items. We did have our sledge hauled out, and we have an empty containment area there for a short time. We'll get it hauled out again before the winter and go into that empty. Maybe jump back just a little bit for the street department, probably missed one of the bigger things going on in town right now, and that's the chip ceiling over in the lemon wire area. They have Maple Grove, Pine, and North Street, I believe, left as of today, along with the wastewater treatment. So I believe we're going to leave the park, no parking signs up, and the reason for that is in about three to five days, they'll come back in and sweep the loose gravel and remove that, so. It's kind of pointless to take them down, put them back up. That process takes quite a while. So we'll be done for a while then, trying to hopefully coordinate sometime in September when Lemon Wire School is out of service, is what we're shooting for, would be the second application of fog ceiling. That'll be a little bit more intrusive than what this is now. There's no, no opportunities to drive on that for a short amount of time based upon the weather, whereas what they're doing now, you can pretty much drive on it right after they put the rock on it, so. We'll try to communicate with our signs that we have out there and through Facebook, and we do make sure and get a hold of Crawl, ambulance service, school district, Armory, those bigger entities over there to keep them informed. The project on, as Joey looked to on Brandon Lake, they do have two crews as of today in there, so we should see some.
Major progress?
Some, some, some really, some dirt flying there, I guess, so. And I believe tomorrow they're going to come in and start working on the park also project, so. A lot of activities down there. I know everybody likes to come and watch, see what's going on, but hopefully you can wait a while and just stay away. It's going to be hard enough for the residents to get into their homes and work around those construction activities, so. But hopefully with a second crew coming in, the pain, as I say, will be short-lived down there for those residents, and it'll just go a lot faster, hopefully. Water Department, again, operations are normal there. We have been notified that we will be testing for PFAS in lithium in 2023. It's really just new to us. We just got the notification, so don't really have a lot of details for that, but PFAS is the new, latest and greatest chemical that we're looking for in the water system. We did have a preliminary test, just to be upfront with everyone through the armory. We did not take the test, so we don't really know exactly, you know. All we know is the test was good from a standpoint of there was a non-detect, basically. I, it's hard to comment on that because we, we didn't take the test, we don't know how they follow the rules, and it gets down to as much of a science as the people taking the test don't put the order on. There's, it's just crazy to think of all those things that could muck that test up, so. I hope they took it the right way, it appears to, if it's a non-detect, it's always a good sign, so hopefully we won't have any issues with that. Along with that, we will be seeing a water rate increase starting at the first of the year. We're in the process of getting our notification from the PSE on what the rate will be. Excuse me, it's not 3%, it's 4.5%. And that will come, as I said, right after the first of the year, and that is on the water only, not on the sewer side. In the Lake Committee, we have not scheduled a meeting yet. That's all I have, unless you have some questions.
Well, the Lake Committee will be the third Thursday, September.
Yeah, I didn't actually know if we were going to skip or where or not, so.
Well, that's going to be our big, it's going to be a major one with our vegetation analysis and a fish survey report from fish biologist up in La Crosse, so. So it'll be a very, very interesting meeting here in the Council Chamber. It's third Thursday, five o'clock.
How's the weeds?
Um, developing a little bit, number excellent compared to last year, minimal. Very minimal compared to last year.
That's the nineteenth, right?
If that's the third Thursday.
Does that conflict with the, the State Preservation Commission meeting is scheduled for this room at five forty-five?
I'm not sure. We haven't been holding them here for months and months.
I don't know because Nikki said it was open. So I don't.
Well, we can coordinate that. That's a, to be efficient.
Sure.
Thanks for that. I, it, it seems like it's so up and down with the lake. Last year it was weeds that we were talking about. Now this year it's, it's good. And so we've kind of waxed and waned on our meetings and, and the need for them. But it's, uh, it's good to see the use of the lake a lot better this year, that's for sure. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the Police Department. We have Agenda Item Number Eight, the July twenty twenty-two Police Department Monthly Report. Chief.
Hello, everybody.
Evening.
Uh.
Scott.
Couple of staffing updates. Our newest officer, John Rigel, uh, doing very, very well in our field training process. He's been accelerated to step three, so we expect him to be out, um, on his own hopefully, uh, in about a month if he keeps his progress up. So he's doing very well. We still have Audrey Gomez, who's a cadet in the Police Academy. Uh, she will be graduating, uh, her first week of October. And then she will jump into our field training process. We do have one sergeant that has accepted a conditional offer of employment with the Monroe County Sheriff's Office. Uh, they're going to background him now. He's got some psychological and physical testing. Should he be successful there and ends up leaving, uh, we will promote from within our department, open up a new hiring process and backfill on patrol. So we don't know, uh, right now we have no openings. Um, so we'll, uh, we'll see how that pans out with him. Summer activities for us have slowed down. It's, it's pretty busy for us with the tractor pull and the parades and the downtown Thursday nights. So that's, we're on the downward side of that. So, uh, thanks to all of our patrol staff that, uh, filled the, uh, the role of extra patrol and, and being out there. They were, this was the first year that we staffed downtown Thursday nights. That was getting bigger and bigger and bigger. Uh, so we put some officers down there. Uh, if you've noticed in the community, all the L E D crosswalk signs are up. Uh, we had nothing to do with that. So Kirk, thank you very much. They look great. Appreciate it.
Well, you ordered them, so.
Yeah. Put it on your doorstep and you're good. So yeah, they, they look great. So I think those are going to be a big win for us with pedestrian safety. Uh, as Molly mentioned, uh, the overall budget, we're working on our Police Department budget. Hopefully we have, uh, a good product here in the next couple of weeks. This Friday, our staff will be down at Dunkin' Donuts for Cops on a Rooftop. There's been a couple, a year or two hiatus from that with COVID and everything. So that's to raise money for Special Olympics. So that's five AM to eleven AM. Um, so I'll be down on the roof. We'll have officers down there. So it's a good cause. Stop down and get some donuts. Consider donating. Lastly, uh, school's starting up here in a couple of weeks. So, uh, lots of pedestrian traffic, of course, lots of bus traffic. So, uh, obviously we're asking the public to pay, pay closer attention while they're out driving, especially in the early mornings and early afternoons. Any questions for me at all? Fantastic. Organic.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the general portion of the agenda. We have Agenda Item Number Nine. Ordnance repealing Division Three of Article Six of the Municipal Code of the City of Toma regarding Community Development Block Grant Committee.
Move to table until we get more details as far as future plans.
One second.
Motion to table by Richard, a second by Sean. Uh, by table, you mean postponed?
Yes.
Uh, discussion on this. So do you want to give a little bit of where you're coming from, Richard, please?
Well, this, uh, disbands the committee that oversees the, uh, the two, two loan funds. And we see, uh, no presentation as far as what the plans are to do with those loan funds. I know the state one is supposedly being closed out, yeah, where the funds will go and how they will be used. We've seen no discussion on that or any information from the set committee as of yet.
What kind of funds are you talking about?
Go ahead.
May I speak to this? Um, so just a little background, upon Rachel's retirement, uh, it was decided by the Toma Public Housing Authority and the C D B G Committee to not rehire someone to take over the C D B G. Uh, that came to my plate, um, as I think one of the next agenda items is to add that to my job description. Um, so, uh, with, um, her retirement, uh, the committee voted to remove themselves from the state program. So, um, that is something that's on my to-do list. I am working on that. But that means that any new loan requests would not go to the City of Toma C D B G. They would be passed along to Cooley Cap and we would be maintaining the current outstanding funds, which are all deferred payment loans. Well, most of them are deferred payment loans. So that means these, the applicants receive the money to fix up a property or whatever. And then they pay it back when the property is sold or upon, you know, death and the closing out of their estate. So they sit out there for, you know, thirty years sometimes. There's not a lot of action on them. So what the C D B G Committee used to do, uh, was review new loan applications. Um, take action on those who were not making regular payments or, or who were not, uh, keeping up on their loan, um, agreement, the terms of the loan. Um, and so what was discussed, I believe, attorney precor presented to your group, um, that any new C D B G items would come before the committee of the whole, um, as they've kind of now come onto my plate. And this is kind of, uh, my committee for oversight. Instead of having a separate meeting, that would probably only need to happen once every three or six months. As there's not a lot of activity going on within the fund. So that's where this is coming from. That's just the background. I can try to answer any questions, um, that anyone would have.
That covers pretty much the background. However, what was considered the federal loan com, loan program was available not only to low income. It was available to moderate income and it was able to draw interest. Have interest on those loans where the state program was, requires the present state regulations. The state made it mandatory that everything be interest-free deferred payments. So they were, it became cost effective to get out of the state program. With the, the bounty that's referred to as federal, that is available to be loaned out today. If we want, if we take an application, if the person is qualified for the state program, it's more feasible for me to take the state program because they're presently giving out grants.
Well, and to be fair and transparent, the federal program closed. Uh, we, we have those funds available and the City of Toma could come up with a loan program to use those funds. But it, it is no longer the federal rehab program. It would be a City of Toma loan program.
It has been for years. It's just that it's had the title of federal on it because that's where the source of the money, initial source of the money was.
Initial source of the money was, but that program is no longer in existence.
Why is it no longer in existence? It hasn't been, there hasn't been no action at this commit, as the council to disband that program.
I, I thought at the federal level that, uh, that the new loans, the money was turned over to the city. But, but people no longer submitted applications to the federal housing authority for that program.
They never did.
Okay, that was always.
It was always local. It was initial funding was a grant from the federal.
Okay, yes.
And once that funding was used and came back, it became a Toma loan program.
Yes, yes, yes. Yep.
But it was just, it always carried the federal title because that's where the funds came from initially.
Yes, but those are City of Toma funds.
Correct.
Um, that could be used, uh, in a City of Toma loan program.
Correct.
Um.
And that was the intent was to maintain properties.
Right.
From being deteriorating.
All right, sorry.
And they, I, sorry.
Sorry, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt here, but so, um, we're talking a lot about a loan program, but unfortunately the agenda item regards, uh, repealing the, the C D B G in total. So I'm, I'm having a hard time making the bridge here between what the loan program has to do with the removal of the C D B G.
That is one of the responsibilities of the C V G is that loan program and that loan plan.
Does that, does that track? And I don't know anything about this, to be fair.
Um, so yeah, I, I suppose if the city, again, this is kind of, um, hypothetical. If the city were to implement a loan program using those federal funds as they currently sit, that would be under the C D B G's umbrella. Uh, what this would propose is that it now comes before the committee of the whole rather than having a separate C D B G committee.
Okay.
So you.
And my point was that until we determine how that new loan program is going to be, the C V G should, committee should still exist.
So what?
Any other question?
Yeah. So what is on the table right now?
So on the table right now, as it sits, uh, are you talking the motion or the agenda item?
Uh, the agenda item.
So the agenda item is repealing the Community Development Block Grant Committee. And then it sounds by extension, moving those responsibilities to this group by extension. The motion on the floor is to postpone until we have more information on the loan program. Because that seems to be a vital portion of what that committee was doing. So until, so I believe if Richard, if I speak out of line, go ahead and correct me on any point here. Richard's contending because we don't know what's happening with the loan program or where that would go. Then you would still need a C D B G for these requests to go to if they were to get them. Are we still getting loan requests?
We, we could take requests. We haven't taken any because there's no one to apply to right now. And that would probably be the treasurer since she is, has become the director of that committee.
Or is about to become in the next agenda.
The federal, uh, program has not been active for several years. The last ones actually were to the Toma Public Housing Authority. Before that, it was a while before, uh, since anything has been worked out of that. Again, that's.
The federal program had very little money up until last, uh, spring and February or April, when we sold two houses. That's where the funds that are currently in the account. Prior to that, that, that fund was pretty much zero.
Uh, Nellie, do you have another question?
Yeah. So who is managing it now? You are?
Yes.
Okay. You're, you're the one that's managing the money, the loan and all that. And it's.
And just to be clear, this recommendation came from the C D B G committee. This is not mine.
Okay, all right, yeah.
The item, I'm just giving the background. So this is.
That's a great point. So the C D B G is recommending to our committee that.
No, that committee never made a recommendation to it. As chairman of the committee, we did not have a motion or an action to terminate the committee per se. There was a discussion on whether we should terminate it or we should go to discontinue.
So why is it here?
Once they made it, but there had, had no official action by the committee.
Do we have minutes from, what was the last thing?
I'm looking at a moment.
Yeah, that was, uh, attorney.
The hold music? You got police hold music?
Pre cor, uh, for the fees request.
I have a question. So there is money in this fund?
Yes, yes.
So if a person wanted to apply for it now, could they just apply to you?
Uh, we don't have a current program in place. So if they were looking for, uh, state rehab money, we would refer them to Cooley Cap. That was a decision made by, uh, the C D B G Committee earlier this year. Uh, in the federal program, we just don't currently have anything in place. So again, not to say that that couldn't be started, but currently there is not anything in place.
So there's just money sitting in the account.
And currently.
Correct. Correct.
With monthly payments coming in.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm on that committee also. And it's my, it's my understanding that there's no appetite from, since Rachel retired and we no longer have a C D B G, Toma Housing Authority common director like we had before, that there's no appetite from your office to take on the responsibilities of reviewing loan applications for this particular event at this time.
I tried to be clear that I really don't have the capacity at the current time to take on this portion of it. Um, and we're here and I'm taking it on. Um, I, I don't have the capacity to facilitate a loan program. So, um, that's something that again, as a city, is not off the table. Um, but there would have to be some discussions as to how that happens. Cause.
That's part of the reason I'm asking for a gable or a postponement, that just flush out and put some meat on that item.
Is there any left in finding the minutes right now? Is it something?
I don't know that I've, I don't know that I've received them yet from last month.
Okay. Is it something we can postpone even just to tomorrow's meeting and maybe we can find the meeting minutes in the meantime?
I will certainly try.
Well, I don't think there's going to be anything on those because there, there, there was no action. We did not recommend to disband. As, as per Richard, who is the chair of that particular committee.
In your honor.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I apologize. I was, I was given different information. There was one misunderstanding somewhere along the way.
Okay, so then, I guess we, if we want to postpone the timeframe, what's your timeframe for postpone, Richard, if that's your motion?
Till the set committee brings back a plan of what will happen to the loan fund and how it's going to get tied into future T I D loan funds that are available to rental properties.
We would be looking for a recommendation from the C D B G leading committee for us to review. We're not gonna, I, I don't believe that we're in the capacity to make those policies.
Okay.
So we would be looking for that committee to make some kind of recommendation. It's fiscally responsible.
So do we want to disband that committee?
Well, fiscally, there, there's no way that we can, um, manage that. We can't take applications. We're not versed in that. That's why everything's getting pushed to Cooley Cap. So if that committee has some other recommendation to make it work, we'll look at it. But I highly doubt that it's going to fit into the budget here at the city.
And in all transparency, Molly, the treasurer is not just taking on the responsibilities of monitoring those, those loans that are out there. That has been part of the treasurer's department over the years, monitoring those loans and taking in the payments and.
That was Rachel. Rachel's, um.
Well, it's my understanding that.
Twenty percent of Rachel's wages were paid by the city to, uh, be the administrator of the C D B G. So she would give me a, a report each month, um, and then I would record that into, under the city's books. Um, but she facilitated.
But the payments now came to the city, right?
Nope. I'm not even on those bank accounts. Those were Rachel and the C D B G committee.
Well, I, I'm confused on that then. I think.
Okay.
Maybe we're misled that that was done through the treasurer's department for the last, oh, years, the actual loan payments, the balances, the loans, taking in the payments.
I think Rachel maintained the individual, the loan, uh, statements, uh, principles and interests that, I know she did that part of it.
Uh, Nellie, you have a question?
Uh, where does Cooley Cap fit into all this? I mean.
They provide.
Cooley Cap is the regional, uh, support for low-income housing. Uh, they give you out loans and grants to fix up your homes if you're low income.
And they don't take care of this part that we're discussing right now?
The city, our city or federal funds, however you want to call them, um, are not part of the state. There is no reporting to the state on those funds at all. But there is reporting on the funds that are, that were originally used with state loans, uh, with the state money. We had to report where it came from and where it went. And they set the regulations on the loans that we could make using that money. And their present regulations were that they would have to be interest-free deferred payment loans. Cooley Cap has, gets a state grant every year to do the same loans. And they use the grants rather than loans.
So, so it sounds like, as I've gathered from this, Kirk, do we need a recommendation from the C D B G then? Is that, does it sound like there's still a purpose, at least for one more meeting, for C D B G to kind of chew on this and bring something back to the committee of the whole?
Well, we were.
I will schedule a meeting for CDBG for the next Wednesday, or first Wednesday in.
Hold on, Kurt. Kurt, go ahead.
I guess we were led to believe that, that that's been taken care of.
Okay.
And I guess, if, if you kind of look at it, if, if the director is no longer participating in that, obviously, that.
True.
We've been holding the same three lines and all that, we were here for that, but.
The director.
Um, you know, there's, there's obviously some disconnect here. Um, I, I'm not sure where it lies, but we do not have the capacity to take applications.
Okay.
I, we have a hard enough time filling our own staff vacancies, let alone if, if we would start to get a stream of those applicants coming in here and the paperwork that goes along with that, it'd be an excellent possibility.
So you would contend, Dean, I got you. Wait a second. So you contend, tell me if I've got this wrong, then we're at the point that it doesn't matter if there's a CDBG or not. Anyway, we don't, as a city right now, in our position count, we don't have the capacity to kind of handle any of this, really, besides the, uh, on Molly's end, the, the twenty percent, is that what you said, Molly? Right?
Correct.
The twenty percent on actually managing the payments and, and all that stuff.
And there will be funds to pay that through this program, so, so it won't be at extra tax levy to do that. There are funds within the program to pay Molly's portion of this work she's picking up.
Okay. Uh, Dean, you had a point or a question?
You said there's still money coming in every month?
Yes, there's.
But we don't collect it, so who's collecting it?
It's coming in and being collected.
They're direct deposited. Uh, those who have payments do direct deposits into, there's a federal rehab account and a state rehab account. Those accounts are, it's tricky because they're held, uh, in Rachel's name, uh, Robert Keen's name, and, um, I think a former administrator. So we're working to try to get those changed over so that I can access them. Uh, right now, Sam.
If somebody missed a payment, we wouldn't know, and?
Uh, we're, I'm, I'm monitoring it. Uh, Sam at Toma Public Housing is helping me get access to the statements. Um, but yeah, that's, I, I'm monitoring it.
And how much money is in the fund right now?
Uh, okay, three hundred thousand dollars.
So if we ban it, what do we do with that money?
Um, so the money.
Back to the state?
No, the money belongs to the city. So it would be, uh, held in the funds to be determined, um, by this body, how it would be used.
So we could spend it anywhere we wanted to?
We could. I think the intent, and I think everybody, the set in CDBG, we've had discussions, we would hope that it can be used toward affordable housing projects, since that's kind of the nature of its collection.
Nellie, go ahead.
May I? And you will monitor that?
I am monitoring that, yes.
Okay. So you'll monitor anything, if we do the housing, uh, housing project, you will monitor those funds, correct?
Yeah, I'm monitoring all of the funds at this point for, not the Housing Authority, that is. And, and that's another part of why this discussion started. We have two committees, which the Toma Public Housing Authority and the CDBG. Rachel was the administrator for both, and the two committees are, are made up of the same individuals. And so for years, there's been kind of blurred lines as to what is the City of Toma and what is the Public Housing Authority. So this is just another step to make sure those are separate entities.
All right. Any other questions?
Just one quick kind of, if we're not going to hire someone special to replace that job, then we just have to make a decision, what we're going to do with the money. If you want to go towards affordable housing, we can.
So.
Yeah. That is one of the possibilities. The other thing is, like I say, when we pre-established all, um, did the amendments of ten districts last time around, we put in the homeowner.
So.
Occupied.
Yeah, remember, our agenda item right there wasn't to talk about what we would do with the money or where it would go. Our agenda item is if we're going to repeal the Community Development Block, Block Grant Committee. So I agree, this is worthwhile discussion. It's something we should definitely know. If we have extra money, or I shouldn't say extra, if we have money in the books, where it should go. It's totally not in the scope of what we're talking about. We really should focus on the CDBG.
And then for next month.
And I agree with Richard that maybe the committee needs one more meeting to come back to us with something on where this should go and how it should be resolved. I'll second his motion to postpone.
I think there was already a second on it. So would, uh, Richard, would you be willing to, in your motion, then, that we postpone this until the CDBG gets a chance to meet one more time and provide their recommendation, so that we, everything?
I would move to postpone it to the October meeting.
October, and then, uh, Sean, are you the second?
I did.
Are you okay with?
Yes.
All right. So the motion on the table is, or the, I'm sorry, the motion is to table this agenda item until the October council meetings?
Why October?
Yes, thank you.
That gives us a chance to have possibly one or two meetings.
Okay, two weeks, okay. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is that going to fit in the budget? Well, if, if you're going to make any recommendations that would fiscally impact the budget, October's getting late, so you need to, uh, make, be conscious of that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I mean, um, yeah, I mean, if, if the CDBG gets a chance to meet and feels that there's something that they can get done in a shorter period of time, I hope they would be encouraged to then, if they.
Bring it to September.
To bring it to September, if that's something. It seems like we've got a fairly straightforward path of how it should go, but we just.
We've got very little time, time between now and September meeting to put the four, four things together.
That's the magic of budget season, Richard.
I myself would rather see September, but we just made a motion for October, so.
Yep. All right, moving on to Agenda Item 10, Amendment of City Treasurer Job Description. So what are we changing here? This is moving, what's all changing this? I don't know if there was a list of the changes at all.
Should just be adding the administration of the CDBG, moving that from Rachel's, uh, job description to mine.
Okay, and there's no.
Just the one item. It should be at the end. I haven't.
And manage and invest city funds to.
No.
Regulation of state statutes.
No, there should be an item that is.
No, it's any, no item.
Yeah, there's nothing high on it, so. Oh, number nineteen, uh, reporting and reconciliation into the city's general ledger for the CDBG programs. It'll be on page ninety five.
Is that it? Or is that already in?
Or is that not that one?
Again.
Number twenty five also.
Administers outstanding community development block grant loans, including but not limited to the servicing and collecting thereof.
That would be the new item. Yes, thank you. Sorry, I should brought my computer up here.
It's.
And then make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I got a motion by Nellie and a second by John to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Can we board on the postponement, the table?
Yeah, we did already. We. Oh, yeah, no, we postponed to October and then.
We encourage you to try to get down by September if you can.
Any expedience on that issue as to.
That's the special, Richard, the, the call boarding, boarding on issue itself.
Right, Agenda Item. Agenda Item eleven, approval of assignment of airport land lease from, what is that, Beaumont to Francis.
Move to approve, second.
Got a motion by Richard and a second by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item twelve, proposed easement for TDS Telecom at Fireman's Park. Do you have a motion?
I'll second.
And I got a motion by Lamont and a second by Dean.
But you can explain it anyway.
Yeah.
Uh, for a while, uh, just a quick background for a while, TDS Telecom has been contacting Director Area, uh, Arity, Shane, the city adminis-, uh, city zoning administrator, about some easements for, um, these panels or cabinets. Uh, for telecom is in the packet. You can see the size of the cabinet. Um, went back and forth, and then they found location they'd like to use, so part of Fireman's Park, which is in the packet there. Initially, they came to the park board and they had a couple of different ones, but that has been, uh, since removed from the, what they're looking to do. They found some private areas. Um, so right now, we're down to the one fifteen by fifteen area, um, with that cabinet. They're looking to do a one-time payment of eight thousand, and the Park and Rec Commission has recommended that, uh, if the council approves it and, um, the city attorney reviews it and Shane takes a look at, you know, make sure it's, falls, you know, narrows it down to the best spot in that area in the park, uh, we take that eight thousand and turn back into Fireman's Park. Some thoughts would be, uh, finishing some concrete work by the skate park or any other thing the Park and Rec Commission would feel be necessary for that area in the park system. Um, this one is, is not overly huge, um, a little bit bigger than like, say, if, uh, Lion Energy or, or Group had, you know, a, a big sub-panel or something in the parks as well as an easement. So just looking for authorization to move forward with it, uh, work with Shane and, uh, city attorney to, uh, look at the agreement and, uh, make sure everything's legit and, uh, we want it in the, in the spot where we feel that it won't affect us long-term in our park system. So that's kind of it in a nutshell, so.
Thank you.
Uh, we looked at the Park and Rec Commission. It's in an area where there's already on one other side, there's a lot of electrical work, uh, poles and stuff, and that's the area where, as long as we would take a look at it, you know, a future possibility of a basketball court in an area, more parking, um, and it's an area that is not really used for patrons, um, it shouldn't be, and it shouldn't look too eyesore for the general public driving by, because there's other utilities along that, uh, Monoa Street sidewalk area there, that new sidewalk, so.
Any further questions or discussion? So I have a motion and a second to approve the proposed easement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks, Joe.
Motion carries. Thanks, Joe. Agenda Item thirteen, resolution authorizing payment of monthly bills.
Month, new bills.
What happened?
I got Lamont and Sean just beat Nellie on that one as a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item fourteen, special beer permit application by Queen of the Apostles for August twentieth, twenty twenty-two.
Move to approve, second.
I've got a motion by Richard and a second by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item fifteen, special beer and wine permit application by Toma Rotary Club for September sixteenth to seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Sean and a second by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with an extension by Ch. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Right, motion by Richard, second by Sean to adjourn. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, as seven thirty-three, we are adjourned. All right, the time is six thirty. We will call to order the Tuesday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, Common Council. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then we will move on to the roll call.
Adam Giggis.
Here.
Richard Harrington.
President.
John Quinn.
Here.
Sean Zabinski.
Here.
Mitchell Cale. Lamont Kiefer.
Here.
Nellie Peter.
Here.
Dean Peters.
Here.
Michael Murray.
Oh.
All right, just as a reminder, before we get started, that we do have people online and are recording the meeting, so if you provide input at the meeting, either on the DS or down in the crowd, make sure you buy your microphone, so that it is recorded for posterity. So we'll move on to anyone desiring to appear before council. We have Agenda Item A, the request by Rena Rouse for consideration of approval of her beverage operator's license.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Dean and a second by John to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for showing interest and returning again. Oh, it means a lot.
Uh, is there anybody else desiring to appear before council? All right, we will move on to the reports. As you might have noticed, I am not the mayor, so there isn't much for a mayor report. Um, I just want to commend the efforts by the city clerk on the election. It seemed like New Machine was super good, did what they needed to do, so keep on keeping on. Uh, we'll move on to the senior executive team, Agenda Item number two, the set agenda discussion, Kurt.
So just wanted to circle back on this from last month. Uh, we did get into the weeds a little bit on some of the things that were discussed. Uh, and I just wanted to try to clarify for the team, uh, what this agenda item is intended for. It's really just intended for communication between us and council and the mayor. Um, every other department has, uh, an agenda item for which they can discuss. A lot of times, uh, the varying team members, uh, discuss items in their respective reports, but there may be, come some issues that are just specific to the team, and, uh, we want to keep that, uh, line of communication open. So if, if you do, um, engage with us or vice versa, we would just, um, want to make sure that, uh, we don't start discussing something that might , uh, impact residents or people that the topic might relate to. We would want to have that on agenda item and have transparency at the next meeting, just to make sure that, um, everybody's getting the same message and, again, transparency. So is there any questions on that? Um, I, and I'll just add before that, obviously, we're still, um, you know, kind of working through the kinks, uh, so to speak, or the nuances of the senior executive team. So this is where, um, we have no problem being pliable and changing our approach, but right now, this is what we're looking at and appreciating any feedback from, from you guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt. Moving on to public safety, we have Agenda Item number three, the July fire and EMS report. Sam.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Jim.
I have my written report, uh, firewise. Uh, we're at, basically at full staff, pretty much business as usual. We did run twenty-seven calls in July. We were a little bit busy on a lot of little things. Um, I am continuing to work on, uh, creating an eligibility list as I know I have a few members that are talking about stepping out in the next twelve to eighteen months, so I'm just trying to be prepared for that. Um, try to, try to stay on top of it and try to stay, you know, uh, full, fully staffed at all times. Um, just to keep you updated, uh, we did get the green light, and I pass this on to Shane, that the, uh, the house at, uh, twelve oh eight Kilburn can now come down. So, um, I believe, uh, the owner has been in contact with, uh, Shane, and they got a plan on getting that property razed, so he can get the neighborhood looking back to the way it should, so. As for the, emergency service building project, uh, things have been moving along. I don't know if anybody's been by there lately. Uh, footers continue to be poured and backfilled, and some block walls are up around the wash bay. Um, they're building, uh, some sub-walls there now in between the, the overhead doors. Um, got a load, five loads of steel, uh, back on the fifth came in, that's on the backside. They're building the concrete, uh, overhead headers for all the doors on the backside. So there's some things that you just can't see that are, that are in motion. Uh, they're taking the apparatus beta grade. Um, what else is going on here? The storm sewer has been connected now. Uh, just slow, but it's slow to me, I guess. You know, but it, it's going well. Uh, there's been no problems. There's been no problems communicating between Keller and myself in all the meetings and we're pretty much talking almost every day, if not every other day, so good line of communication with them folks, so it's working out well.
So it is on schedule at this time?
As far as I know, yes, and in every meeting, we talk about is there going to be a problem with any materials coming in and there's stuff here that I can't believe is here already, like the boiler system's already here for the heating. It's like there's stuff coming in, they got Conex boxes there that they're putting these items in as they come in because they want to make sure that there's no problems, so it's about all I can report at this time, so. We had our fire hose tested in July. I'm here to report that we had ten links of hose fail this year. It's not all that uncommon. Usually, we lose three or four. This hose was purchased back, most of our hoses bought back in the early two thousands, and they just tend to fail, and we just kind of replace it as it fails rather than to try to jump in, and it would cost a lot of money to try to fund a full replacement, and there's really no need for that. We just kind of monitor things and as it fails, we replace it, and we just unfortunately had ten links that went this year, so. I received twenty-five hundred dollars from the Frank G. Andrews Charitable Trust. That's going to go towards a couple of laptops for our command unit. We've been extensively working on pre-fire plans of the businesses of Toma along with the schools and the hospital and different things like that in the event of emergency. We got all our data and stuff that's right at our hands, so thank them folks for continuing to give us funds over the years, and they've been a really great organization. I think I mentioned this last month, but I'll just bring it up again. The city received thirty-four thousand, just under seven hundred dollars from the state of Wisconsin for the two percent dues. That's because of our fire education program with the schools and the public, and then along with our fire inspection process that we have, that we go out, inspect the businesses, and we got a paper trail that basically shows that we're doing it and following up on the calls and taking care of the issues throughout the city. Been working on the twenty twenty-three budget. We know things are going to be tight again, so trying to be as creative as we can here and shuffle some funds. We know some areas are definitely going to be, you know, fuels up and certain things, and we're just trying to figure out how, rather than to ask for money, where can we transfer things to just try to help everybody out in the big picture, so we're working very, very hard at that. Now for the exciting news, it's very exciting to me anyway. Got a phone call Friday afternoon from ISO, and we had an audit down here earlier this spring, and been shooting very hard to get the city to a three, and we did it, and took a big chunk out of that number three, and now I'm going to be working towards the number two, so this was a big goal of mine. I said when I took this job seven years ago that I'm going to continue to make improvements, and this was the one big improvement I wanted to do, and it's important. I know it's just the number, but it's really important to the city, it's important to everybody's homeowners, insurance, their, you know, the industrial park. When new business comes to town, they ask like, what's your, you know, your ISO reading because they can come to Toma where it's a three, or they can go to New Lisbon where it's an eight, you know what I mean? So it's like, it's a draw also, so.
Go stay firm tomorrow.
Once again, going to continue to drive and get towards that number two mark, so.
How are the citizens going to see that? Will we see anything?
That's a good question.
Or does it just stop things from going up? A lot of times, you hear that.
I'm not in the insurance business, so I can't tell you that for sure, but.
But it's supposed to be passed on somehow because we talk about saving the citizens millions of dollars as this goes.
I know every year, I get my insurance bill and it's more every year, right? You know, and it's like the cost of everything goes up and it's like, I don't actually know how the end result is, like, is it going to save me fifty bucks? Is it going to save me a hundred dollars? Is it?
We'd have to ask our agents and see if they have any idea.
Exactly.
How it's worth it to their point.
Right. Yep, and that'll actually take an effect on October. Hasn't formally actually been released. It was a verbal thing to me, and then the mayor will get a copy of that contract and it'll actually be October first of this year when it actually goes into effect, so.
Awesome.
As for EMS, we're still currently down one full-time member. We've been advertising for that. We've had a couple of applicants. We're going to just kind of keep that open for a little bit here and see how it goes, but we definitely have a couple of people that are interested. We also have somebody, a couple of part-time people that are interested. The technical colleges are just finishing up their classes right now for the paramedic school, and a lot of young new faces are out there, and they come and they do clinicals in our facility, and we have that interaction with them, and a couple of them had came and said, hey, I'm interested in a job here in Toma, you know, and they know all the excitement coming on with the building project and everything else, so I'm not worried about it. We're going to find some help and we'll have the best, so. Like to take a second and recognize Pete Hunic. Pete operated with the Toma Area Ambulance Service even outside of the Toma Police Department position. He operated as an EMT for twenty-three and a half years, so a lot of years helping our community, so we thanked him for that, so. Candy should be getting moved in. We got a new AP clerk.
Not until October.
Oh, okay.
Working for you right now?
Yep, yep, she's been part-time, but I mean, it's coming. We're working with Molly in the treasures office to get her into that position here, so hopefully it'll happen soon, so. We ran two-hundred-and-eighty-seven calls in July. That's actually just down a bit from the July numbers last year, and actually, August is down a little bit this year from last year, too, but number them phenomenals, you just don't know what's going to happen one day to the next, so still busy. I think I mentioned some of this, but I'll just go over it real briefly. We received twenty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety dollars from the ARPA funds from the state of Wisconsin towards equipment and training and different things that we qualify for. We also received one thousand dollars. We wrote towards the Lion Energy Grant. That's going to be used towards a training simulator. We also received one thousand nine-hundred-and-twenty dollars from the Frank G. Andrews Charitable Trust. This was to purchase some portable carbon monoxide detectors, so that way, if the medics go into somebody's home and they're not feeling well, we got to make sure we protect our people because there could be carbon monoxide in there. And then the best part of this is I bought those last month, and then we just had our state inspection today, and they inspected our vehicles, and that was the one thing that they added that we have to have, so we were already on top of it and already haven't purchased, so. Besides that, just to keep you informed, we're in the process right now of revalidating our Medicaid process, so we have to do that, Medicaid and Medicare. This is the Medicaid year right now, so that process is in place. We should be informed here shortly through the email system that everything is a go. Of course, there's always something breaking down in the ambulances. Unit two-six-seven, we had double air conditioner failure last month along with a radiator, so we had the main air conditioner go out, we had the rear air conditioner go out, and we had a radiator that leaked, so unfortunately, that cost us a bit of money to get repaired, but it's definitely necessary, and it's definitely way cheaper than a full replacement, so. Just a reminder, on the twenty-fifth, next week, on Thursday, we got Toma Area Ambulance Service Annual Meeting with the townships and the villages, kind of give them an update on what happened over the past twelve months, what we're looking at doing over the next twelve months, having a discussion about the per cap rate increase, so.
Is that open to any?
Absolutely, yep.
And when?
Five o'clock, the twenty-fifth of August. It's at the North Side Fire Station.
Do you put the agenda out?
The agenda's out. It's on the calendar, it's down on the board downstairs.
My thought process is we could add a little note to it that there may be a quorum of the city council in case there's more than.
Can you get your mic on up?
Sorry.
It's okay.
Said we should think about putting a note on there in case more than quorum of.
I'm not a hundred percent sure, but it might be on there.
Okay. If it is, that's fabulous.
I think I have that already into our.
Perfect.
Our language, but I will double check that.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thanks.
Last thing I have is just to kind of keep you guys updated, the emergency siren that we purchased for replacement due to the lightning strike came in. It's actually at Emergency Services, the vendor that's going to be installing it. We're not ready for it yet, but it did come in, and they just informed me of that last week, so I'm just passing that along, so once the site is ready for it, it will go up, so.
Did insurance cover a hundred percent of that?
They covered, it's kind of two different parts. They covered the basically most of the siren, but there's going to be some install, and then we're talking about eliminating the old one so that there's going to be a little cost involved in that, so we'll probably disabsorb that right through the building project, so, yep. Other than that, that's pretty much what I got.
One big notice that I looked at is just important, like you said, is the calls are down, just the number of transfers is down, it's almost half of what it was last year.
Yeah, yeah, but that doesn't mean anything either. I mean, calls can be up and, you know, you can look at it a couple of different ways, right? It's a service, but we want to be financially strong, but sometimes more calls doesn't mean you're making more money either, you know, there's a lot of uninsured out there and things like that, so nothing you can do about that.
Any questions for Tim?
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a job.
All right, move on to the library. Irma?
It was a good book you gave me last month.
Is it a Western?
Yeah.
Excellent. My streak continues. Anybody who wants a recommendation on a book, it's me, just ask me. I do that for free, all day, every day. Good evening, everybody. July ebooks, check out one thousand nine hundred and fourteen physical items checked out in July from the library, five thousand and two, giving us a total of six thousand nine hundred and sixteen items. New books in the children's department, A Spoonful of Frogs, A Witch's Favorite Treat is Frog Soup, and to give it an extra kick, she needs a spoonful of frogs. She runs into problems trying to keep the frogs on the spoon. If you want to know the rest of that story, you'll have to come to the library and check out the book. I can't tell you everything. Next book in the children's department, it's a numbers game.
What a tease.
That's what they say. It's a numbers game. It's a book that explains the math behind football, so we have books like that, nonfiction books for young people. Another nonfiction book that we have is called Sky Wolf's Call, and it explains how indigenous knowledge comes from centuries of practices and ideas gathered by people who have a long history with the natural world. So again, we do have not only fun books like A Spoonful of Frogs, but we also have nonfiction books for young people that are written at their reading level, which serve to educate, so come on down. In the adult department, new books, The Science of Murder, The Forensics of Agatha Christie, American Cartel Inside the Battle to Bring Down the Drug Industry, another book on how to love your gut, Supercharging Your Digestive Health and Transforming Your Well-Being From the Inside Out. So if you're having digestive issues, we have books that might help you. Last new book, Dead in the Water, A True Story of Hijacking, Murder, and a Global Maritime Conspiracy. Coming events. Now, we have a movie coming Thursday, September eighth at five-thirty. It is called Pig, starring the famous Nicolas Cage, and it's a story about a truffle hunter who is kind of a hermit, but he has to go back to the city of Portland in order to find his kidnapped truffle finding pig. Okay, Thursday, September eighth. You're going to want to put these down on your calendars. I have a lot. Friday, so in three days, that's last day to turn in your reading log for children and teens, so if it's not there by Friday, we can't help you. August thirty-first, last day to turn in reading logs for adults. September third, during the citywide garage sale, we're going to have a book sale on the library lawn and also a very, very, very huge book sale at the fairgrounds. Now's the time, people, the holidays are coming. Come and get a book, okay? We can work out deals. Now, finally, this one is important, and on September twenty-two, we are going to screen The Manhattan Shorts, and what it is, is a collection of ten short films, and we show them all at one time. It takes about an hour, an hour and ninety minutes. You've come to these, we've done this once before, and it went over so well. These films are put together, they're award-winning films, they're just, they're really, really nice. We're going to be putting out a lot of advertisements about these, and I thought I would mention it now so people could write it down. This would be a great opportunity for you, you know, to bring a date to the library and just, you know, we're going to be screening these, it's a classy event, it's free, you don't have to say it's free. Write it down, okay?
When is that?
Yeah, September twenty-two. I like that. Write it down, September twenty-two. It's a class event.
What time?
Five-ish?
Suggested attire?
Call for detail. Excuse me?
Suggested attire?
Well, I was thinking I would dress formally just to, you know, help set the tone, but.
Semi-formal?
Excuse me?
Semi-formal?
Semi-formal, I like that, yeah, semi-formal, we cocktail. We won't be serving cocktails.
I was just going to ask.
We will be. Well, maybe we can't, maybe we could get like a liquor license for that night.
We can do that for you.
Can you do that for us? I might come before the council to see if we can.
Beer and wine.
A little wine. Beer and wine, I like this more and more. All right, does anybody have any questions for me? It really is a lovely, lovely event. We did it once before, nobody in the area is doing it, and we did it, people came, we're so impressed, so I hope you can come, and feel free to wear what you want, we won't judge. Any questions? Any questions, comments? No, nobody?
How did the book sale along go for the concert series?
It was a lot of work, but I'm not complaining.
Good.
Did you sell some books?
We did, we sold some books, but we'd like to sell some more, that's why, let's see, when is it, September third during the citywide garage sale.
There's plenty more.
There's so many, so, so, so many.
We could just add on to the library.
I like how you think. You and I need to talk. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to senior disabled services, we have agenda item four, senior disabled services monthly report. Pam.
Good evening.
Evening. Hi, Pam.
Hi. Well, things are going well at the senior center. However, I do have to take a minute to say that we were very sad since last Wednesday, and yesterday was the funeral of Bob Hono, and he heart and soul there at the senior center, so there's a lot of Bob stories this last week and this week, and a lot of remembrances. Moving ahead, Labor Day, Monday, September fifth, we will be closed, so will the meal The numbers for the senior center in July were one thousand two hundred and fifteen, and that compares to last year's July at one thousand seventy-eight, so the numbers are a good comparison. We continue to have live music on Friday mornings, ten fifteen. In August this month, we had Skip Jones on the fifth, he a folk singer storyteller. On the twelfth, with Rod. singer storyteller. On the 12th was Roger Ellis, country singer. Coming up this week, Sherri Saranzen. She's a harper and a singer. Very good. Um, she does programs with different themes. So, I'm not sure whether it's summer days or what it'll be this, this Friday. On the 26th is Singin' and Swin' Band, and they do swing, big band, western, early rock and roll, polka, waltz and styles. So, that's quite a mixture. And, and he's on the accordion and she's on the percussion, so it's pretty good. Looking ahead, because we don't meet until the 3rd Tuesday next month, on the 2nd of September is Never Too Late Band, and they're a little bit of everything, 50s, 60s, old and new country. On the 9th is Michael Slater. He's a piano, pianist, pianist, I think that's how you say it, and he's very good. Could listen to him all day. On the 16th is Scott Wilcox, and every show he does is a little different. But I have a, there's a song he wrote that for some reason, I really like it. It's, the song is, "I've Got a Red-Headed Problem." And the 23rd, Caleb Fitz Maurice. He's a country singer, guitar player, and he'll be back. And then on the 30th is Shannon Hoagy, and she plays a ukulele and she has an awesome voice, singing voice. So, those are the music coming up. Um, International Bible Study, BASF, for women starts September 15th again. They were off for the summer. The men's chapter meets in La Crosse, and there's not much I can tell you about that. If you're interested, you'd have to look it up, but the women's meets, meets at the senior center. Um, line dancing continues. We have about four new people. I tell you, those three concerts that you guys put on really was good advertisement, because we've been growing all summer after the concerts with people coming to the line dancing class. It's been good. Um, pals class is an exercise class, and as soon as I get enough people to sign up, we'll have another one. Stand Up and Move course, I'm ready to go this month, later this month, and that's for those of us who are more sedentary at desks or in front of the, in the evening in front of the TV. Um, it's to get us up and move more, because the more we sit, the more we have heart conditions, diabetes, cancer, some kinds of cancer, and it goes, list goes on and on. So, this is just, it's not an exercise class, but it's a healthy um behavior mod. How can I change myself? And it's a four-week course that I am now certified to teach. Um, wellness exercise continues, and we grow with that one too, and that's Monday, Wednesday, and Friday mornings at 9 o'clock, and it's just a hoot. It's a lot of fun. Uh, yoga. We haven't had yoga for several years because of COVID. That is starting up on the 1st and 3rd Thursdays at 10:15 at the senior center. So, if you start coming right away, everybody's going to be new and fresh for it. Um, looking ahead, September, well, first of all, September 20th this month, at 10:15 to 11:15, we are lucky enough to get training for anyone who wants to come on AED use and life-saving techniques, and that's by the ambulance department. Thank you to them. And so, you can come on down to the senior center if you want that kind of training. But looking ahead to October, these are dates to write down. Um, Take the Mystery Out of Medicare Program by Alice Ackerman, the elder benefits specialist, will be Wednesday, October 12th at 4:30 at the senior center. Um, we get a lot of people in that are just going to think about retiring or approaching the age, and they learn about the Medicare program. Medicare Open Enrollment Options by Alice Ackerman will be Monday, October 17th at 3:30. And um, the dementia friendly coalition of Monroe County had, um, there's a play called Grandpa and Lucy, and it was written by a pre-teen at the time. It was written, and her grandpa was developing dementia, and we were going to bring that to Sparta and Toma, and then COVID hit. So, it's been on, it's been on hold for about two years. Well, the author reading, she's a teenager now, the author came and did a reading at the Boys and Girls Club in Sparta and in Toma, and in October, on October 29th, 28th in Sparta and in Toma on the 29th, the actual play will be done. And there'll be more information coming out, but um, in Sparta on Friday, October 28th at 6:30, and Toma on Saturday, October 29th at 2 o'clock. So, those can go on your calendars. It should be very interesting.
Where are they? Where is it going to be?
More information to come out yet on, on that. Sorry. Also, I just recently tacked down, on October 12th, Wednesday, October 12th, the Monroe County Health Department will be at the senior center for flu shots. So, um, put that on your calendar to come get your flu shots. Uh, this month's Sunday Fund Day is the Sunday coming up, the 21st of August, and it's the last outdoor, we usually do in the summer months, outdoor, and this year it's at Butts Lake Park, and we are meeting instead of 2 to 4, it's 12:30 to 4, and it'll be picnic lunch, games, and visiting, fishing. Got to bring your own fishing poles and bait though, and boat rides, NASA boat rides, and those have been very popular all summer. And so, that's coming up. Uh, loan closet continues with medical equipment and giving closet with incontinence products and other things like that. They continue and they are busy day in and day out. We continue to collect eyeglasses and hearing aids for the Lions Club, and we're one of the places in town that, that have buckets for that. Um. Volunteering in this July, it was 161 volunteer, and last year it was 71. So, that's really good. I just a reminder that our newsletters are usually done and ready to be picked up at the senior center on the last Thursday and our Friday of the month. Sometimes I don't get them out on Thursday and they're out on Friday instead, but last Thursday and Friday, and there's magazine racks by the front and back door, and so people, when they're out and about, can run in and get their newsletter for the next month. I need some feedback from you guys. It's not a voting item. It's, I just would like some feedback. I am, I am working on Halloween. It seems early, but it's not that early to be working on that, and I want to get my fundraising brochures out by the end of the month. And my question to you is, should we have a Halloween party? And I'm going to follow this with the um, community trick-or-treat hours too. It kind of goes together. Um, I have a couple things here. Would you recommend 4:30 to 6:30 for the party with 5:30 costume judging? Or should it be like 5 to 7 with costume judging at 6? Now, I say that because citywide trick-or-treating could be 5:30 to 7:30, or 5 to 8, or 6 to 8. What would you recommend? It's not a voting issue. It's not an agenda item. I, I said it, but what would you recommend? You represent the people in your districts. What do you think they would like?
We need to sell it three hours.
Three hours?
Yeah, five to eight.
Five to eight? Okay. What, does anybody else have any suggestions?
What's the other one? Five to eight?
Oh, I, it's 5:30 to 7:30, five to eight, six to eight. Depends on how many hours you want people, little ones, to be coming to your door. Originally, I thought, okay, we can have the party 4:30 to 6:30, but then I started thinking, oh, that's awful close. It's a school night. Maybe 5 to 7 would be better, and if that's the case, a trick-or-treating would be something like 5 to 8, and leaves that extra hour after the party for people to go trick-or-treating on the streets.
What day does trick-or-treat fall off?
Saturday.
Monday this year. Yeah. I know that you guys, the last two years, have recommended an afternoon thing, because it was on a Saturday and a Sunday. Now, we're back to during the week again, and so I'm re-establishing the hours, and I just thought I'd get your feedback.
My feedback is from 5 to 7:30. It's a Monday. People have to work. Um, it gets dark.
Call my grandson.
Okay.
Quarter to 10.
Okay.
Don't we have some traditional hours?
Yeah, in, in the past, I think we've done 5 to 8 for trick-or-treating, and the party, I'd have to look back in my notes, because I've done it for 20-some years, but.
I will, I.
I, I segwayed in the past with trick-or-treating at the care center, but they don't do that anymore. So, now I'm trying to establish a stand-alone party without, without that.
I, I do, I live very close to City Hall, so um, by 7 o'clock, I don't get any trick-or-treaters myself. I mean.
We're good, so I'm saying.
Okay.
Kids go to their neighborhoods where there's a lot of people.
Yeah, where my grandpa lived.
They live in the business district practically. School's all the way around you.
Well, we do have, I think Park and Rep have their trick-or-treats down there. Most of the parents take the kids down there to trick-or-treat.
I got trick-or-treaters till 10:00.
Yeah, I do, the party you're talking about is the one that I talked about, that I, yeah, that we facilitate. So, and I, and I kind of correspond them. Okay. Thank you for your input. Um. On bill, I was trying to catch that. On the buildings, um, I don't remember if I told you last, um, last month or not. We got new toilets upstairs in the senior center, um, and shelves built along two walls for the loan closet storage upstairs. So, those are some additions. We still have, uh, the building 1, uh, 1,004 Superior Avenue Building is still for rent. It's right next door to the senior center in the heart of downtown Toma, approximately 3,000 square feet for 1,500 a month rent, and you should contact me if you're interested. I do get calls and I do have people come and tour, um, the building. We received Andre's grant of $2,000 to dry-clean special needs prom dresses. I do need some volunteers from the community to come in, and that will not clean all of them, but it'll clean a, a good, a good selection of them. So, I do need some people to come in and volunteer and select those dresses that can be dry-cleaned. Dry-cleaning for those go from $36 to $50-some dollars a piece. So, it's, it's um, quite an expense. And then, we also got $1,500 from Andre's for our music program that I told you about earlier, all the physicians that come in. Um, and we started work, uh, way in spring on the Arts and Craft Fair, but that is now gearing up again for that. That is in November. Crazy Days. We had our Crazy Days Lunch fundraiser, and we thank our sponsors, our donators, our volunteers, and all the people who came in and bought lunch that day. And this year, we officially added pre-orders and deliveries to our event. Our volunteers checked with visitors, businesses for pre-orders ahead of time. They also went out to businesses on Saturday, got orders, and delivered the meals. And so, my report last year was, we made, we worked in the red, but we made less than a dollar last year. It rained cats and dogs that day. Well, this year, after expenses, we made $736.78. Woo! Very happy about that. And it took a lot of volunteers and a lot of work to do that. Um, and our sponsors were Creative Computers, Driving Stars with Mike Murray, First United Methodist Church, Quick Trip, Murray's on Main, Junior and Evelyn Noes, and the Senior and Disabled Services Board members. So, um, and in the next newsletter will be a list of all the volunteers that helped. It's quite a list. Just want to remind people that we do have the Toma Meal Site at the senior center. It's, um, I just had somebody come in today and ask about what the price is and the age is, and it's 60 and overs $4. Under 60 of age is $14.07. So, it's a big difference for that. That is put on by the county. Um, the Special Needs Ad-Hoc Committee and the Senior and Disabled Services Board will meet before your next council meeting. It'll be the first Wednesday, September 7th. Um, the ad hoc special needs one is at 5:15, and the Senior and Disabled Services Board at 6:15 at the senior center. I see my people writing that down on the committee. Um, anyone have any questions? Come on down and join us for some activities.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you. Very thorough. Uh, moving on to the planning and building inspection. We have Agenda Item 5, the July building and code enforcement reports. Shane?
Good evening. So, we've got the July building permit report and the code enforcement report from Casey. Do you guys have any questions on that? I got a couple other things I want to touch on.
Any questions on the reports for Shane?
Yeah, I have one, Shane. Um, how many violations do we have as of this day? Are they?
I can get that, I can get that next month, a year-to-date violation report. Casey, that's the one you have in front of you just for the month of July, but it's easy to run that report and get it for the entire year.
Okay, thank you.
With it?
Question, Shane. On the property that's being donated by Mr. Dickey, are you going to do, doing an inspection on that one to see what it means?
Is that the second floor up above that we're, that you're referencing?
Yes.
On the Don Combelet? Yeah, yeah, as soon as we have access to that, that would be the idea to get in there and see what conditions are.
Any other questions for Shane on the reports?
By the way, I do have a couple things I didn't want to touch base on too.
Yep, absolutely. For sure.
One is kind of building off of, Tim just finished his ISO audit. Uh, my department will actually be getting our audit for plan review, building code, and flood plane in September. It's quite an extensive process. Um, just going to think of these couple days, you can compile the information that they actually require, so that it really involves meeting with, um, the, the lady that does the actual audit for a couple days also. That's coming up for my apartment in September. Um, and I want to let you get a little key And I want to let you know Casey's been working on a property on William Street since she, since she started. And actually, she inherited this property as a public nuisance from all the way back when Corliss was working on it. And I just wanted to let you know that property on William Street is finally in compliance. And now she's going to make past trade record on a property on North Glendale. I think one thing that we're learning is part of the process, the tools that we have available to us via citations and abatement aren't always effective. So, and we touched base with Penny previously. He may look at the option of actually filing some of these orders in circuit court. They've got a little bit more teeth behind them at that point. And the process shouldn't break out as quite as long. So we're going to look at doing that. But in that, I continue working manual preparation for the next L R P C meeting on housing assessment and direction to that committee.
All right, excellent. Any questions for Shane? Anything else from you, Shane? You're good to go?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, move on to the chamber, the convention visitor bureau, Tina.
We'll move us to the end, please.
Thank you all. A couple of just quick notes. I think people enjoyed music so much here this summer that we had a gentleman playing his guitar from the balcony over here. It was kind of fun to watch here for a couple minutes. We did have our last DTN for the year, so very excited to have concluded a successful season. We, we feel there was probably close to six thousand people there last week, Thursday, based on some of those numbers that, that we calculate with. So a great, great event. We had, I know buses that came in, hotel rooms that were booked. Every, almost every single band this year brought along either groupies or roadies that were also booking hotel rooms. So that's really the first time we've seen that number increase from this event. So excited to share that with you. Feedback from almost every single band we had was that Toma is a place that they feel welcome. They're excited to come here. They, our people have been amazing. They say watching this event come together is, because usually every band will tell us, there's no way we can set up and get ready in this timeframe. And we say, yes, there is. And then we do it, and then they just stand by kind of like awestruck. And almost every band told us afterwards, watching your community work together and feeling so welcome to this community has been wonderful. This is what small-town Americana is. And so we thank all of the seriously volunteers and our community for all the help on that. But to that end, our thanks really extends to the city departments that help us out. Could not do this without the help of probably every city department. So Kirk, thank you to your crew. I know there's extended hours there, our police crew, ambulance, fire, everybody, everybody that really helps out. Toma is a special community, and that's evidenced by how well we work together. I've actually had a call from a New England community asking us questions. And he's fighting another group that wants to put on a concert event similar to ours. And he basically says, well, we don't want to work with them to do events like that. So, well, then it's not going to work. So kudos to everyone here. That being said, today I booked a band already for next year. So hopefully we'll get some permits through here. I kind of put the cart before the horse a little bit. We have had a professional photographer coming to some of our events. So if you see the really good pictures we've been putting online, that's not us. We're hiring people to do that. We've had them at Tractor Polo, at parades, and also having at Cranfest. Just another way for us to use photos to promote our area, promote our events, and kind of up our advertising game a little bit. We've also been writing several of the Main Street Bounce Back Grant acknowledgement letters. So they have extended that program and have added more funding to it. So it basically, if there's a building that's been sitting vacant for an extended period of time, and someone takes a lease on that agreement or purchases that building, they're eligible for a court grant from the state, I think W E D C. We don't approve the grants, we don't vet the grants. We simply write the acknowledgement letters that, yes, that building had been vacant for this amount of time. Now there's a lease attached to it. Other than that, I can say that tourism is expected to be up from previous years. Thankfully, it looks like it will probably be higher than 2019, which was a great year for us. So we're really seeing things speed up a lot. That has to do with some of the projects going on at Fort McCoy and Buffalo and those kind of things as well. But all good for us as community as a whole. Any questions?
Thank you.
So if you work on DTN, it's amazing how they're coming in.
Good work, tell of you as well. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. I would appreciate a motion approving the following. Have the approval of minutes from July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. The July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two cash and investments report. The special beer and wine permit application by Toma Rotary Club for September sixteenth to seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. And the special beer permit application by Queen of the Apostles for August twentieth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
We've got the motion by Sean and a second by Richard. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Awesome, thank you. Motion carries with one abstention by Mitch. Moving on to the committee of the whole section, we have agenda item five, ordinance repealing division three of Article Six of the Municipal Code.
That was postponed.
But I think that's the recommendation. We provide the recommendation to this body and go forward. So again, the item is ordinance repealing division three of Article Six of the Municipal Code of the City of Toma regarding Community Development Block Grant Committee. As Richard mentioned, the recommendation from the committee of the whole was to postpone to a future meeting. The, we talked about October last night, but maybe it might be more prudent to do September. Think about budget. If it shows up again and we decide to postpone again, we can always just go again. But we have Penny here, I think it was your agenda item last night? Do you want to?
It was, so it, my microphone is on. It, it was my agenda item at the request of the set team. We talked about the issue in terms of the fact that the, we don't have a community development block grant director anymore who is running the program. The, as I understand it, the loans that are outstanding right now are being managed through the treasurer's office, which is why we had the agenda six item of amendment of the city treasurer's job description. And the real question is in this group, is there, do we need to continue with the CDVG committee when there isn't any loans? From what I understand right now, or at least there was a suspension on it. Loans can be done through, I think, Coolie Cap, if I'm correct on that. Otherwise, I think you need to have, look at getting a CDVG director. Because we don't have one to run that program. So it's a policy question for you all. Really, do you want to continue with the committee or not? This was a recommendation done by the set team because of what wasn't exist, at least from what I understand, and talking with me about what to do because there wasn't a functioning director or committee at the time. You're still there, it's just there wasn't any action being done.
So my question here is, I guess, so Rachel is doing this in the Housing Authority?
Correct.
So who's now in charge of the Housing Authority?
Housing Authority is their own entity, and they hired, they hired the individual to take that spot. And leave her name is Sam.
Samantha.
Samantha Drake, sorry. I didn't know her, I just was introduced to her as Sam, so.
So we'd only be saving money on this side of things, I guess, by not having a person do it?
Right, so as I understand it, again, please, I'm looking at you all over there. You might have a better understanding of it. But my understanding is that the CDVG director and Rachel's position was that, along with the Toma Public Housing, part of this salary was paid by the city for the CDVG work. And then the other part was paid through the Toma Public Housing.
So can this new person, can this?
Okay, first off, one of the things I kind of get. Plus it's, again, there's been this concept of how these bodies were commingled, and they really aren't. Toma Public Housing Authority is separate from the City of Toma. And it makes it seem like we were because the way that things were approved, we had our CDVG director on Toma Public Housing Authority to kind of connect that. But as I understand it, we're trying to be able to separate things and do things the way it arguably should be, should have been done. It just makes it easier.
The reason requesting a proposed postponement or tabling was to, for the committee to evaluate where they feel we should be looking at going as far as how the funds will be used in the future and things along that nature.
To, to do a recommendation to this body? Is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay, because as I understand it, again, this group is in charge of CDVG, the actual committee, right? You are the overseer of that group, okay? As I read the ordinance, what that group's duties are is to simply look over loan applications and recommend them to you. That's the authority and power they have, okay?
And also monitor existing loans.
It's not in the ordinance. It's not in the ordinance.
It has been the policy from day one.
Again, I, I looked at this for this issue, and again, I, I certainly don't want to create any issues other than what the actual ordinance says. Is it, it does just say, looking at loans, we can pull it up as far as what it is. So again, what this group wants to do, if you want to send it back to CDVG to get some feedback, that's fully up to you. I believe you're the chairman of that committee?
Yes, I am.
So you would need to get an agenda together, call a meeting, et cetera, and then report back. It's really up to this, this group, and you're the policymakers for the City of Toma.
Man?
Yeah, go ahead.
So we no longer have a director. Is that correct for this committee?
Correct.
We no longer get loans through this committee, for this committee?
Correct. There is a pot of money that circulates, as I understand it, for the outstanding loans as they're collected. I, I don't know what's in their actual pot of money that the state program, I know the Fed monies were already voted, and they have already been discontinued and put in the general fund, as I understand it.
I think specifically, we don't have a program that we can direct people to, to fill out application to get a loan. It would be more specific on what we're lacking along with the director.
Right, there's no administrative person. There might be a committee that looks at them, looks at the loans to decide whether or not to recommend them to you. But I'm going to blow that ordinance to while we're waiting, but go ahead.
So it'd be probably easier just to send them all to Coolie Cap?
That is what, we're in the process of exiting the state revolving loan fund. That was established on three fifteen by the council. They've ordered to do that.
Yeah.
That is the program that Coolie Cap also operates.
So they get the funding to them then?
Yeah.
We are no longer eligible for that funding.
Okay, so my question is then, you go first. You're more important than I am.
Not certainly not. You are, you're elected first.
No, you get the information there.
The power statute, or the, the ordinance that establishes this committee, the powers are, under section two dash four eighty-eight, the committee shall review loan applications and make recommendations to the council as to whether or not low, low-interest or deferred payment loans should be awarded to homeowners for home improvements or to business owners for the promotion of economic development in the city. That's it. It doesn't say you're going to oversee the loans. Just says you make, you review the loan applications, you make recommendations to council. I, again, I didn't create the ordinance. I was there probably when I was not even born yet.
So there's going to be, as we understand it, no more loan applications to this group? So?
There's no play.
So there's no, there's no reason, if a committee that exists, to only approve loan applications, that we would no longer be receiving?
Right.
Nothing to be done.
And that's the question, I guess. My understanding is there's no director or an administrative person that can take on this extra work. And so when the director's no, was no member there, what the group decided is they were going to pass on applications to Coolie Cap. Is that correct? Am I all speaking correct?
Yeah, Coolie Cap, they're passing on requests for loans that when people come into the Housing Authority now and ask about loans, they refer to Coolie Cap.
Got it.
Coolie Cap's eligibility requirements are much tighter than what they wore under the federal loan program, the city-controlled federal loan program versus the state program. The state one has regulations that all loans are deferred payment loans with no interest. And the Coolie Cap program is all grants at the present time. And the reason we decided as a committee, CDVG committee, to get out of the state programs was because there was ill-revenue for the, for the coming in or just expenses going out. Where on the federal program or Toma program, we do charge interest and there is income to support.
But I thought the federal portion was the one that was done?
No, federal is the one that we still have, is still active. If we had, if we were to take applications, we could approve them tomorrow.
I thought, Molly, you said yesterday the federal one is the one you thought was done, right?
Federal program is no longer in existence. There are funds there that could be lent out if we developed a loan program. There is not currently a loan program in place for those funds.
So the ultimate question is, you guys are?
Correction. Their, their, the federal program was a local revolving loan fund program that was established by a federal grant. There has never been any federal reporting regulations on that program.
So back in two nine, looking at the minutes from the CDVG joint meeting, at that time, what it states is to determine, establish, and proceed with the plan for future City of Toma, CDVG operations and staffing. From that, on three three, there was another meeting. They committed to making a recommendation to the council to exit the state program. And on three fifteen, council approved that. I would have thought if, so at this point, we exit a program, we have none, we have no director, there's not any, there, there's no sense to me to have this committee at this point. When those decisions were made, if you wanted to continue a program, should have taken that into account and continued on with something. We have nobody to administer it. We have nobody to take applications. I, I don't see where this is viable.
So we should have done back in March and didn't do, is what it sounds like.
So can they even, as without a director of this?
Well, they, they can meet, there's a committee, right?
Their advisory.
So there's by, they are.
So they can, I mean.
They're under you.
Yeah.
Their powers are in the ordinance. You guys would have to give them powers to do something different than what that is. In other words, if, if the issue is, is you want them to talk about the future of the committee, et cetera, but that's really here.
I feel like we should have this conversation here right now. So then, one question. I heard that there was like a couple houses worth of money or something in there. So I don't know what the amount is, but if it was three hundred thousand dollars.
Subway, man.
And if we were doing five percent interest, that's fifteen thousand dollars a year. That doesn't come close to paying anybody's wages, like to manage a program like that. So I just think it's like, is it kind of like a lose-lose? Should we be better off taking the full amount coming towards something collective, we, we can all?
I wasn't, I'm sorry, wasn't Rachel, I, I thought that, you know, she was planning on retiring, not as early as she chose to. But this was the plan that she had brought to you all, and that was the plan, that it was going to be.
Yeah, she was instrumental in presenting, it was not the primary.
So I, my opinion, I guess, is that we just hash this out now instead of kicking the ball down the road and then trying to decide what to do with the funds that we have in the account.
I think we can take the, one suggestion is maybe we let the set committee come up with a plan for how they think it would be best to apply the funds for the city towards the same kind of goal, maybe even community development ideas.
So to piggyback off of that, John, I went to a number of meetings with CDVG. We stated that the city's mission is the same as both of these organizations. How we get there and how we partner is where we are today with Vandalaw. And Vandalaw, we have the meeting set up for the twenty-second, I believe, twenty-third. They're going to give us the direction what we need to do for our housing in the City of Toma. So that's where we're at. We're, we have promoted at least three times that I can remember at different meetings. long-range planning, CDBG, that we are willing partner to use this money towards the same mission of affordable housing.
Affordable housing, one of the missions. The other was to maintain existing properties from deteriorating when homeowners are unable to financially afford to maintain that upkeep.
And I don't believe that that mission statement is stated in our budget book. And we may need to have that addressed by someone at some time. I would have hoped that the committee or the director previous would have maintained that, but I don't see where that has.
We had, so how many outstanding loans do we have now? I asked yesterday if anybody's even monitoring them, I wouldn't know if anybody paid or didn't pay them.
Yeah, I'm doing that.
There are, I believe?
But I asked you yesterday, and you said you didn't know if they were being paid or didn't pay them. If you had missed a payment, you wouldn't know it.
No, that's?
I believe there's about 23 or 24 loans total.
Emily, Molly was saying that she's trying to get herself on the accounts, and she has access to it.
Through, and she didn't have access?
I'm monitoring them. I said last night that I'm working with Sam over at Toma Public Housing. She gives me the information, I'm tracking who's paying and what's current through.
So is everyone defaulted right now?
They don't default, they're all deferred payment. We have people who are set up on payment plans and to be honest, the only ones who are in arrears was Toma Public Housing, which we have now. Correct.
May I?
Yeah, absolutely, go ahead.
So since Molly, and I'm trying to grasp all this, so since Molly's taking care of all the loan accounts there, my question would be, why wouldn't we even have a committee?
Yeah, I was talking about it.
That's the, I think that's the question we're asking.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, over the past few months, since Rachel's been out, it's been, you know, someone will come to my office an hour before the meeting and say, "Oh, there's a meeting today. What do you have ready for us?" And I guess that's the question, what, what should I be? Yeah, I just don't know. Again, this was kind of thrown in my lap, and I'm just trying to navigate.
Are we looking for a motion?
We're a, we're a voting body, we're always looking for motions all the time.
I would like to make a motion.
To?
To disband this committee.
So it's the ordinance, that there's an ordinance repealing that, which essentially would do just that.
Would that need first reading, second reading? And all that? Would we want to do that tonight? Or would that need someone to read back, first reading, second reading?
You can do whatever you, again, you are the governing body. You can do first reading, second reading, adoption, all at once, or you can do one, it's completely up to you.
So?
So where does this $600,000 go then?
Well, here, hold on a second, let's hold on. So Nellie started a motion.
I don't know if there's?
No, well, that's what I was saying, we stopped right in the middle of the motion, kind of figure out where?
I like to look at that paper before.
Because the money's not an issue at this point in time.
The money is not?
Right, some discussion for another time.
Correct.
Because we can get way off on that. So the money has, where the money goes has nothing?
Yeah, the money would be beyond the scope of the agenda item, we couldn't talk about the money really, just that we know that it's there, and that we have to figure out what to do with it at some point.
So who's going to be in charge of that? This committee then, or, because we got no committee anymore now?
They, they were not, you have always been in charge of the money.
True, we didn't know that till tonight.
Yep, it's okay. You've always been in charge of the money. The committee's job were to review the applications and recommend them to you. And then you would get them and say, "Okay, yeah, these people vetted them, boom, done."
I guess I just would think the committee would have some oversight on it too.
The committee always has, in the past, had oversight on delinquent loans, on your decision whether to go forward with repossession and disposal of properties if we did go forward with repossession.
The director brought us all that and?
She did, that was her courtesy to, yeah.
That's the key, when you have a director, the committee could direct the director to take care of those issues.
But somebody's going to have to be responsible for that, for the $300,000 we got outstanding.
And I'm doing that, and the bulk of those loans are deferred payment loans, so they don't pay anything on them until the property is sold, or again, if they were to pass.
The only, the only requirements on the loans as far as annually is to verify that the taxes have been paid. So that's one of the conditions on the loans is that taxes have to be maintained currently.
Okay, so?
It's one of the, one of the check.
And Molly could?
I think we're starting to talk in circles. Nellie, what was your motion?
My motion is to disband this committee.
So waive the first verbatim reading, do you have that ordinance?
All right, the motion by Nellie, to waive the first verbatim reading of the ordinance. Do I have a second?
I'll go ahead in a second.
All right, I got a second from Sean. Any further discussion then, now that we have a motion on the table?
And then, when it comes to deciding the money, we can figure that out later, is the council, and maybe we listen to Vanderwall, their conclusions. We all have a little bit on that now. So we disband this, the money stays? The set team?
Money's still in the, still in the CBG fund, it's still CBG fund.
So my, my question is, is because this was a state slash federal program, is this 100%, that $300,000 whatever is that's in the account, is that City of Toma's, 100% City of Toma's?
Look at it this way, there's two funds. One is the state fund. That money, when it's collected, has to go back to the state when we close out the state program. Molly will be able to collect 17% commission on those funds when she pays them back to the state.
So some of these, well, it's not like, you have the paper, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So some of these?
What's not federal is, eliminate the word federal. It's Toma revolving loan fund.
So all these that are on this list is?
No.
Okay, so, so we're going to have to continue paying the federal people on some of these payments?
There will be people that will be continuing to pay money into that federal fund, revolving loan fund. The City, the Toma Public Housing Authority has two loans that are federal for a total of about $250,000, or right in that neighborhood. And then there are three or four more federal loans out that were made with federal money.
So my gap here on my thinking here, and I guess I'm just not getting it, is?
Then that money will come in over a period of 20 years.
Yeah, okay, so how do? If we disband, get rid of this, okay? Molly now has to oversee the payments of the federal and state and make sure the federal people are getting paid from these?
No, we're the federal.
We're the federal, I pay the state.
We're, we're?
Those are loans to the City of Toma Loan Fund, revolving loan fund. Just regard the word federal, that's just identifies where the money came from initially in the program grant.
Over the land.
So some of these people can, I mean, if it's deferred payments, so they can, I mean, 40 years from now, not have to pay this. That's right, until they sell the property. So, okay.
Till their state's settled.
All right.
I bless you.
Any other discussion? All right, so reminder, the motion and the second on the floor is to waive the first verbatim reading of the ordinance repealing Division 3 of Article 6 of the Municipal Code of the City of Toma regarding Community Development Block Grant Committee. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
All right, motion carries with one no vote from Richard. At that point, then I would entertain a motion to waive the second verbatim reading of the ordinance. All right, I got a motion by Nellie and a second by John, to waive the second verbatim reading of the ordinance. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Yes.
All right, motion carries with two no votes, Richard?
Yeah, I'm just like, I'm doing it all in one.
Oh, of one shot.
So you want to waive it?
Yeah.
Yep, so Richard and Lamont voted no to the waiving the second verbatim reading of the ordinance. All right, I would then entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance.
I mean?
There's no motion on the floor, so just sit down, and then you can discuss. If somebody wants to make a motion to adopt.
I make that motion.
All right, motion to adopt, do I have a second?
I'll make a motion.
I got a motion by Nellie and a second by John to adopt the ordinance, further discussion?
Do you want to do it in one meeting, or should we adopt it next month?
Why don't you do it, do it next month, you should have, would not, not passed the waiving and the second reading.
Just answer. I just wanted to get it done before the budget.
All right, shouldn't have no further questions.
It's just a question.
That's a good question.
That's a question.
We don't know the tools in the toolbox if we don't talk about what we have.
We don't always have to waive all the readings and do it anyway, as I need.
Yeah, it's a fair point.
Again, you guys are the governing committee.
I'm just making it up.
Yeah, absolutely, you're absolutely right, all of you are right. There's no wrong answer in this. Well, there isn't, because it's?
Based on what we just voted on, the ordinance is now up to be voted on, yes or no?
Yeah, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance.
You can't put it off till next month, no.
Get it, Richard, I have a vote, okay?
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, was that, no votes, was that Lamont, Dean, and Richard? All right, that'll be five to three, so the motion carries. The ordinance is better adopted. All right, moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, Amendment of City Treasurer Job Description.
All this, sorry, all this does, was it adds one rule that she is going to administer? I can't, now I can't.
Well, she did approve that change in her job description, they add in the CBG.
And then she'll report to us on this, now we have no committee, so any monies that are moved in this, she'll report to us.
Lamont, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Nellie, she pointed to me first.
You can just point, it's, how is called?
I make that motion.
All right, so we have motion and second.
Don't be.
Just a reminder, being on page 54, if you look at item 25, administers outstanding community development block grant loans in Cooley, but not limited to the servicing of collecting, or in collecting their own.
But now she's got no committee to report to other than us.
The committee of the whole, I think, becomes the group that she reports to.
Make sure that we get on the agenda occasionally to know what's going on with this.
I guess quarterly updates on this, or yearly, and what are we thinking? We should like talk about this right now, I think.
I would be happy to include it in my treasurer's report at committee of the whole on a monthly basis, if that would satisfy.
That's perfect.
At least, at least so it don't get forgotten with this. Well, it could also be that there's nothing to report.
Yeah.
And it's just fine, it's just a line, I'm like, yep, nope, nothing, no payments, okay, cool. Then, I guess for the set team, can we have, maybe next month, a preliminary idea of what to do with the current funds that we have and the funds that we'll be getting in?
So I think, what I touched on before, Vanderwall will probably kind of drive the bus a little bit on the potential for utilizing that for affordable housing. If something else were, you know, to be optimistic or opportunistic, we would obviously?
But your meeting will be before the next meeting, correct?
Yeah, it's the twen, next?
It's next week?
Next Tuesday.
Monday, next Monday.
It's next week.
Okay.
So it will be before the council.
So then, you, I guess?
They will have, we're going to have to give them some time, I'm not sure how fast they'll turn around all the data, because they're still collecting data on other ends, census stuff. There's, there's a lot to it. So we would just be getting a small piece of the puzzle if we did it in September.
Okay.
Is my guess.
So October and then, I guess?
Well, it's just got to work its way out.
It does, it does.
There's no timetable or on it.
I just feel like, I feel like this is something that can be just like kind of forgotten about.
Maybe it's money that's needed, that they're in charge of, that Molly's?
Why there was such a push for it for the budget? Is there something that's going in the budget for next year?
Well, I think we have a couple items to address with the budget. It's the previous payments that we're making towards the old director position. I also love that's coming back, that's changing. And I guess where the reference came into the budget is what Richard had mentioned about potentially creating another alternative program. So if that were to come to light, then obviously that would have impact on the budget through administration or whatever. That's, that's really where we're headed with that.
And just as a side note, with Molly's change in job description, is there any remuneration involved? Or is she just?
Shouldn't be, she's being compensated by the revenue that comes in on the percentages that is administrative fees that came in.
But how is she getting that money? How is that administrative fee fund in this, that's the state program, right? How is that money getting into her income stream?
So?
Are you billing that account or, for your time? Because there are administrative fees in that state program that will be?
15% on the state program, and of course, 15% on the, on the federal.
And we have about $32,000 in it, I think, or something like that.
So I'm not 100%, I'm, I'm following what you're saying, but basically, that revenue that we're paying towards Rachel's salaries, or not revenue, but wages, will be returned back to the general fund for, particularly for the treasurer's position wages. So we will capture that, put it, apply it towards the treasurer's wages, and see, it'll be a positive for the general fund in that term.
And there's administrative fees in that state fund. Should be a lot of that, when you get all that paperwork done, there's $32,000, and then plus 17% of any payments that come in?
Correct.
Can be captured, and then that'll just be applied. She can just put time towards, or you'll figure out administratively how that money will go through. Does she get any pay increase for taking on these duties? Does she deserve that pay increase for taking on these duties? I mean, that's something else, but I'm just, is that something we need to address in the future?
Molly says no, so we'll just?
We'll leave it at that.
We'll leave that for now.
Because we changed her job, job description. And increased her duty.
We changed her job description because of something she was already doing.
Yeah.
I mean, not, I'm not trying to spurn.
Is this one of the?
But not in the past, I mean, she just took it on before we addressed it formally, now we're formally addressing it.
This is really just?
It's just bringing it up.
Let's, uh, let's give this, let's give it as an action item to set, to take a look at, and if there's anything that should be done, there should be a recommendation on the next meeting based on this, because I think we're getting a little bit in the weeds on this one, is that fair?
In regards to additional compensation?
Just, there were questions on the administration, what was your question on the administration fund, Lamont? That there's money that would be?
Yeah, it's in there, how's it going to filter into the, into her pay structure? How are you going to take money out of that? Let's just say there's, let's just say there's $30,000 in it that we cast down, plus 17% of payments are going to come in. How is that money going to get out of, because that's, that was segregated money in that, in the reports, and how is that going to filter into her pay system?
It would, it would apply to the treasurer's wages, is where we're looking at putting that. I think it's, goes?
I mean, all at once, you're just going to unput it in there, or is she going to put time against it for duties done? Or how is that?
Um, I believe there's going to be some reporting on how that administrative fund is dispersed as far as the state.
Yeah, it would be, I think we were discussing today, just maybe doing, you know, 17% of my wages through that fund. So it's just a budgetary shift, pulling it out of the general fund and charging it to the CDBG.
As far as the budgetary impact, as far as Rachel's wages, they were shown as an expense on the city budget, but they also had a revenue, an equal amount coming from the CBG loan program reimbursing the city of those wages. So it should be a, a wash.
Toma Public Housing reimbursed us for her wages. Toma Public Housing reimbursed us for those wages, so that's going away. We won't be getting income from them anymore, so that, it does affect the budget in that way. We won't be getting income from them anymore, so that it does affect the budget in that way.
And CVG revenue, 50% revenue is paying debt revenue.
For a portion of the, and so that would be the same, the same thing, only it would take out of the treasurer's wage budget and move that to CDBG. That's how that will. So it's just a budgetary shift from the general fund to fund four, which is CDBG.
So do you think that, do you think that your time will take 17% of your time on this?
17% of my...
Like how, where does that come, like the 17% come from?
That's what the loan program sets it at, that it's a 17%. So we could...
17% of the revenue.
Of the revenue, yeah.
Yeah, your 17% of your wages will eat that up and you will not have an ongoing 17%.
Right, we did 20% of Rachel's wages. And so we said instead of the 20%, we would bump it down to, I mean, we could do 10%. We could do...
Well, what's...
It'll free up money in the general fund.
Yeah, let's, I think we're getting super...
Budget time discussion. Yeah, that's just to explain, it's just a shift from the general fund to that.
Yeah, that's great.
I just don't think it's going to take 17%.
Ask one question, that's it.
Go ahead.
Yes or no, or I don't know. 20% of Rachel's...
You got your microphone on, Nellie?
I'm sorry. 20% of Rachel's pay came out of the general fund. Is that correct?
Out of the CDBG.
Okay.
Yeah, not tax payer dollars. CVG...
CDBG.
All right, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
All right, so a friendly reminder, the motion on the table is to approve the amendment of the city treasurer's job description. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I love you know what this is about.
I've got, I've got a lot of notes. All right, moving on to Agenda Item Seven, Approval Assignment of Airport Land Lease From Bohem to Francis.
Who was it approved?
Who'd I have?
Lamont and Dean. Lamont on the motion, Dean on the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Eight, Resolution Authorizing Payment of Monthly Bills.
So moved.
I've got Sean on the first and Mitch on the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Number Nine, Proposed Easement for Tedious Telecom at Fireman's Park.
Motion to approve.
I got Dean and John for the motion, the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the general portion of the agenda, we have Item Number 10, Resolution Accepting Donation of Real Property to the City of Toma.
Just on that last item, we wanted to make sure that we had the city attorney go through that.
I was just looking at that going, where is it? So yes, if I could just have it be subject to, what was it?
Legal approval?
Yes, we just got that as the motion, yeah.
So what do you need to, uh, to make procedureally?
It would be to, I don't know what the last motion was. Somebody could just make a motion to authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign after my review and approval of the document.
That was part of last night's discussion too.
Yeah, so I'm gonna be my motion to...
I second.
All right, so I've got Dean and then Nellie to include the stipulations you just specified.
What do you want, John, to...
We added that all previous...
No, no, it just is something separate. So they already approved it. And now there's a new motion authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign the easement or other appropriate city official after, after review of the city attorney, review and approval by city attorney. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Who was the motion? Who was the second?
A motion was Dean and the second was Nellie for the next one. Okay, now we're on Agenda Item 10, Resolution Accepting Donation of Real Property to the City of Toma.
Move to approve.
Second.
I got a motion by Richard and a second by Lamont. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say... Oh, sorry.
Once that property is transferred to the city, will that be falling under the senior services bill, uh, bill yet?
We don't know that there's any discussion associated with it once we get it.
Because it's part of, that's upstairs of 1004, which we already own, which is managed by a senior center.
And it's actually a third interest of the building as well. It's weird. I don't know. But it cleans it up. That's good. We spend on discussion about it other than getting it. Once we get it, then the SET team can give you some recommendations.
Plans will be forthcoming.
Sounds great.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the Appointment section of the agenda, we have Agenda Item 11, Appointment of Kerwin Greeno to the Public Works and Utilities Commission to fulfill the remaining term of Bruce Peth ending April 30th, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Sean and a second by Nellie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item 12, Appointment of Kerwin Greeno to the Ethics Board to fulfill the remaining term of Bruce Peth ending April 30th, 2024.
So moved. Second.
Got Sean and Nellie again. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'd entertain a motion to Richard.
Second.
All right, I've got Dean and Mitch on the adjournment. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned as of 8:03 PM.